Okay, we'll call the order to the city commission meeting for August 17th. Thank you everybody for joining us. We have invocation first on our agenda by Pastor Mark. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have you pronounce your name.
Mark Hoblitzel.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, let's pray. Father, thank you for this chance to meet tonight and discuss the business of the city. We ask for your wisdom. We thank you for those who are in leadership and who are making decisions. We pray that you give them wisdom. We pray that you give them understanding. We pray that you give them a heart for the people of this community. And we pray that you would help our community thrive and prosper through these decisions and through the ways that we decide to go forward. We thank you for your grace and your mercy upon each one of us, and for your son Christ who died on the cross for us and forgave each of us of our sins. It's in his name we pray, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is personal appearances, but Jim Cook has been called away and not able to join us tonight, so we will not have personal appearance today. Next is public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Being none, coming forward, I'll close public comment. Consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to get their minutes from our previous meeting in the consent agenda. I would, it's been presented to me, an addition to the consent agenda, which is a license for cereal malt beverage for the La Casita Mexican food restaurant and bakery on South Main. I'd like to add that to our consent agenda. Tabitha, is there anything else we need to know about this particular?
No, the restaurant applied for a cereal malt beverage license and it came in today and everything had been approved and we just didn't want to make them wait until later in September if they didn't have to, so.
If it's okay with the commission, we'll add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the city budget. So something that we've been working on for several weeks. It's been published based on the state statute. At this time, we would open it up to public hearing. Anybody wish to address the commission regarding the budget? Being none, I guess we'll close public hearing. Next thing I need from the commission is, we have two motions, one to approve the resolution and one to approve the operating amounts. I would need further comment or discussion from the commission on the budget.
Tabitha, what's the resolution number?
Two eight zero eight.
I move to approve resolution number two eight zero eight, a resolution expressing the property tax policy of the city of El Dorado with respect to financing the annual budget for 2016.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Need a second motion.
I move to approve the 2016 operating budget in a total amount of $26,628,292, providing for an estimate of mill levy of 47 mills to certify the same to the city clerk or to the county clerk.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? I guess my comment to that is, this is still an estimated 47 mills. As the county responds and returns with the mill levy and final evaluations, we're still targeting 47 mills. We will adjust the total dollar amount rather than the mill levy if something's different.
That's correct. If it varies, it always varies a little bit around there. We don't actually, they won't know the number, I think, till September. We usually hear about it in November. And so, but several years ago, we had an incident where the valuation came way down and they raised the mill levy, two mills. We subsequently had conversations with the county and they're gonna keep us appraised to that. So if that occurs, we'll change the budget rather than raise the mill.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is project number 392, El Dorado Sewer Improvements.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, project 392 is sewer improvements on the south side of town. The city was awarded a CDBG block grant for the project last year. Part of the procedures and guidelines that the city's required to follow is to have in place policies regarding civil rights, conflict of interest, and procurement. And what you have before you tonight are updating some of the language in our previous policies to reflect changes that were requested by the Department of Commerce and the federal government. And this allows us to get our money for the block grant project.
Are any of the changes notable, or just?
Just little things. Nothing notable at all. Just really, changes are, I think there was one sentence in one of them and I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember, but not significant.
And generally, they're just, anytime you get a block grant, or anytime you get money from the federal government, they have you readopt, even though you've adopt them, they have you readopt them. And so, you know, generally, we won't discriminate against people. We won't profit by the work. We won't, we will use a procurement policy, and if we don't have a local one, we'll use their procurement policy. So they're all just general statements about how to do business, and they make you do it every time, even though you've done it lots of times.
Okay.
Yeah, in your packet were the last revisions from 2008.
All right, entertain a motion for sewer improvements.
I move to approve the policies regarding civil rights, conflict of interest, and sanctions and procurement procedures.
Second.
You have two seconds called. You get one of them?
Get your pick.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five, zero. This is the procurement policy that we've been familiar with. Okay, next on our agenda would be 2015 standard traffic ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Murphin, City Attorney, we have before you in two separate items tonight, consideration of the adoption, first of the 2015 addition of the standard traffic ordinances, and subsequently, the 2015 version of the Uniform Public Offense Code. I've gone through the changes with regard to the standard traffic ordinance code. Those changes are fairly minimal. There are some definitional changes, and probably the most interesting of those is the inclusion of the definition of an auto car, which is new, and it contemplates a three-wheeled vehicle that's operated by a steering wheel and does not involve the straddling of the machine, as would be the case on a motorcycle. The inclusion of that definition frankly caused several of the other ordinances to have to change to include that. If you'd like, I can go ahead and tell you about the UPOC changes as well, or if you'd prefer to take up the STO questions first, we can sure do that.
I think at the same time is fine.
Okay. The UPOC changes were also fairly few, some definitional, but two that were of particular interest. There is a new ordinance which contemplates battery of a school employee. Heretofore, battery of a school employee would have been a Class B misdemeanor, meaning the maximum possible penalties would have been up to six months in the county jail and/or a fine of up to $1,000. But as is the case with other officials, such as a law enforcement officer, a public school official or employee is now afforded the same sort of protection, inasmuch as a person found guilty of that offense would now be subject to up to a year in jail and/or up to a $2,500 fine. The other point in the UPOC that seemed to have the most changes were in relation to necessary changes in line with the state law changes concerning firearms and the carrying of a concealed firearm, and those are all also included in the UPOC.
Any questions, Jim?
I don't know.
What's the ordinance number?
G 1202 for the standard traffic ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G 1202, an ordinance amending section 10.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's addition 2015 be passed and approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second for the traffic ordinance. Any further discussion? Being none, roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Okay. Need a motion for the, I guess before we do, can we be reminded of what our concealed carry is for this, for our city facilities? Is it any different than what the state requires or allows?
I'm going from memory here, so please give me an opportunity to update you in a more thoroughgoing way. But I don't think we availed ourselves of any of the potential kind of bridge legislation which might have allowed us to continue to keep this building off limits in spite of its not having security at the door. So I think at this point, concealed carry can transpire within the confines of this building. Thank you.
And all city buildings?
Yes.
Unless they're specifically posted and qualify for any of the exceptions, then yes, they would also be open to concealed carry.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, didn't they, isn't police stations, isn't that one of them that they can't, police stations, maybe courts?
The secure area, we can disallow in a public area, but the courtroom's...
So the courtroom is open to guns?
Okay.
Really? Justice.
That is interesting.
I'd have missed that one.
We choose to do anything different than that, what does mean, does the city have that ability?
Mr. Mayor, interestingly, there have been several moves in recent Kansas legislative history which would seem to have the effect of keeping municipalities, in most cases, from imposing any sort of more restrictive laws than the state law would otherwise require. And so, I would have to answer your questions on kind of a case-by-case basis and against the backdrop of any potential exceptions. But I think generally speaking, what is true state-law wise would have to be pervasive in all the municipalities as well.
Okay. And if I remember, when they passed the law, and Jim kind of alluded to it, cities had a window where they could tell the state where they're gonna put in essentially metal detectors and guards at the doors, and then they could restrict it, but short of that, so that everyone was weapon-free, I guess. They couldn't do it. And that time came and went, and the commission didn't want to take any action. So I think, again, off of memory, that we, that that window was passed.
Yeah. All right, okay.
But that was before they had, before what, this July, when now anyone can conceal carry with no training, nothing, which is insane.
Depends what you're trying to achieve.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move that ordinance number G 1203, an ordinance amending section 9.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to public offenses and referencing the Uniform Public Offense Code Edition 2015 be passed and approved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Being none, roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Okay, next on our agenda is a fall festival resolution.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the Dilly Deli has requested a special permit for a liquor license for their fall festival event. The fall festival will include the car show, Oktoberfest, Walnut Valley, Walnut River Festival, sorry, and the...
Oktoberfest?
In September?
Yes, Oktoberfest is actually in September, according to our resident guru.
Who's that?
Germany's.
Germany.
In September?
Mm-hmm.
Just saying. If you go to Germany, go in September if you want to enjoy Oktoberfest.
Oktoberfest in September and guns and courtrooms.
Oh, I knew it. What more could you ask?
Yeah.
So is this pretty much the same as what they did last year with Oktoberfest, but now?
Yeah, now it's just gonna be part of all the other events. It'll be one weekend. Oktoberfest, I believe, is on Friday evening downtown. They'll still have the 5K. They'll be serving beer upon the passing of this resolution. Bratwurst, things like that downtown. They'll have live bands. And then they, and then Dilly Deli will continue this license. They've asked for it for two days. They will continue on Saturday from, I believe, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and serve during the car show and Walnut River Festival, so.
Isn't this also when they're celebrating 100 years of oil?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the other one.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Staple 100.
It'll all be down, located down on Main and Central that weekend. Dilly Deli will have this beer garden at 100, in the 100 block of Main, of First Street, sorry, right here, by Suite 120 in that area.
First.
So.
Right.
What's the resolution?
1204?
The resolution number will be 2809.
You gotta do it. You gotta do it. I move to approve a resolution number 2809, a resolution authorizing a temporary amendment of consumption of alcohol, liquor during the fall festival event located in 100 block First Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? 100 North Main, are they gonna be on the sidewalk in the street? I mean, there isn't really anything there.
The 100 block of First Street on Main, sorry.
East First, yeah, same question. There's no, there's...
So it'll be in between Empreys and 142 in the street, right?
Uh-huh. They...
Okay, just gonna be in the street.
Yeah, it'll be blocked off for those two days. Actually, that whole area, I think, will be blocked off during those two days.
Okay. All right. Any further, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Maybe you already said that.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
All right. Well, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. New business.
Real quick.
Sure.
I just thought we'd maybe clarify for folks. There's a lot of street repair stuff going on. I've had a few calls, people asking what we're doing. I know out by Central and Haverhill, I believe that's QuickTrip, right?
Correct.
And they're, that maybe?
A month.
Month, okay. So they're working on that project as part of QuickTrip moving in? And then what's going on up here on South Main?
That is the gas company replacing their lines.
Okay. Is that something that maybe takes a few days, weeks?
I think they're getting close to wrapping it up. They did a lot of, there's a lot of aged infrastructure down there, and they did some relocation, where now they're serving off alleys and, and, and moving some, to some higher pressure services down in that area.
Cool.
They're also on Vine, aren't they?
They are on Vine, yeah. You'll see, and maybe if you don't mind, I'll give a little more update. The AT&amp;T will start laying some new fiber in the downtown area. You'll see that work going on along with new fiber along Central Avenue from Summit to the hospital. It's good to see AT&amp;T's investing in El Dorado and putting fiber in. So from what we've heard from them, they're planning on investing in El Dorado, so that's a good thing for our connectivity. Heard mention Kansas Gas. The sewer project has wrapped up on Central in front of a hospital. There are those temporary millings patches out there. The contractor will move in here shortly in September timeframe to begin work on the milling overlay and the widening of Topeka and Central for that geometric improvement. As you mentioned, QuickTrip, it's quite an inconvenience out there right now, but they have more than half of the removal done today and wrap that up tomorrow, relocating some of our storm sewer. And then Donlinger will be in right, right there, laying some new pavement right behind them, so.
And Scott, you may tell the commission too, over the weekend, there were some emails of concerns about the truck route. Update them on the meeting you had today with KDOT and John Prather.
Yeah, I met with KDOT's area engineer. So with this being on state highway, QuickTrip petitions the state of Kansas to allow any modifications in their rideaway. So I met with their area engineer and John Prather with Grondiak in their office and discussed some concerns. It's really congested right now, especially at peak times, lunch hours, 5 o'clock early in the morning. But really, we think it's the safest alternative that we could have out there. And the city did modify the traffic signal phasing to, so there'd be no conflicts with east and westbound. And we have been keeping our eyes on it. So I know it's tough right now, but they'll be in and out before, before we know, and everything will be done, so.
How's Tawanda coming?
I just heard, just a little bit ago, asphalt on Wednesday, so I'm a happy guy. And those homeowners down there have been very patient, and they're gonna be happy to see that as well.
Topco asphalt?
Base lift.
Base coat?
Yeah. Yep, so we have all the storm sewer in, about 90% of the curb and gutters there. We got some tie-ins to do and some intersection work. Start seeing that asphalt going down, and it'll be done here pretty quick.
And will they do east-central the same time they do west-central?
East-central will be repaid from Griffith to the bridge. That'll coincide with the work in front of the hospital, same contractor.
Scott, I want to thank you for having that meeting today with KDOT?
Yeah.
And with John Prather. It settled a lot of things, because he was worried about. I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, when, I think, when agencies work together between KDOT and the city and hear all concerns, good things happen, so we appreciate it.
Can you tell us about the roofing permits and the signs in the yard and where we're at on that? Are we still having problems with it, or the...
Not so much. And in fact, all of the contractors have a good understanding of what the city of El Dorado's regulations are concerning that, with that. And really, a lot of positive feedback, at least in our office, from other roofing contractors about how we've handled things, and appreciate it. The first week was, was really a lot of people in and out and trying to get them to understand what y'all's regulations are regarding that. But we have been contacted by the Attorney General of the State of Kansas, which was very impressed with our process and the regulations and how we handle that. And has asked us to write a letter that he can show to other communities. And if we had the time, he even asked if we could go and speak to other communities about how our department works as far as code enforcement, permitting, and inspection.
How many permits are you up to now, do you know?
It was 1,400 Friday. I wouldn't be surprised if we're 1,500 now, or close to.
Yeah, my house got riffed twice in this whole process.
I heard that. I heard that.
Where are we at on Oak Street? Are the people in the neighborhood aware that that's gonna be a truck route, and they're not gonna pay the whole amount? Some of it's gonna be paid by the city, since it is a truck route?
It's on that petition that's been circulated. If we hear from anyone that's willing to carry a petition, I'd be more than happy to give another copy out and to see if we can get a revival in that, in that going on. But a petition was handed out, and we have not heard back. It had a few signatures, but we have not received it back. But if anyone's listening, or if y'all hear from anyone, I'd be more than happy to meet with them.
So what do you plan on taking it to gravel?
The, I talked to Brad, and I think it's on, it's on the list. Brad's not here, is he? And so, I think it's gonna happen here in the next week or two. We'll start working on it.
I think we need to put it in the paper and make them aware that Oak Street's going to gravel.
Okay.
I just had, real quickly, we were talking about Fall Fest, September 19th, they're doing the 100 Years of Oil Celebration with the Oil Museum. And so I would encourage people to make sure they make it over to the Oil Museum as well for those activities. But if you are... but if you are a part of a business in town or a group and are interested in being a part of that parade, there's a lot of forums coming in for that Hundred Year of Oil Celebration Parade, and if you have any interest, I'd encourage you to get in touch with the Oil Museum, and then, I think that's all I had.
Okay. Any comments from Commissioner Badway or Commissioner Wilkinson?
Comments? School starts Wednesday. That means school zones are in effect.
They've been in effect for, since last...
Really?
Yeah, I mean, the lights have been flashing, I've been slowing down.
They've been going off at four o'clock in the morning.
Well, I'm not out at four, but I've been slowing down, because they've been on early in the morning and at noon, and then...
Been exercising.
Anyway, watch out for kids.
Yes.
I'd also say with schools starting, you know, another reminder is, I've noticed there's, of course, a lot of new faces in town with all the Butler kids coming back to school, and I would just, you know, encourage everyone to make it a point to go to your way to welcome a lot of those kids into the community. I see a lot of new faces at the Y and, and downtown, and so if you know they're in town with Butler, make sure to make them feel welcome.
I still, I still can't get over this, that it's lawful to carry a gun in a courtroom. Are you saying we missed our window? When, I, I mean, and I remember that when they said, you know, we had to have a metal detector, but I didn't dream that pertained to our municipal courtroom. So we've missed the boat on that.
I think, and we have to look.
Yeah, I'll have to look.
But even if we hadn't missed the boat, I think that the expectation was that at some point in the not-too-distant future, we were going to be in position to have metal detectors and guards at every point of access to the building in question, and I don't know that we ever thought that that was a very likely outcome for the city either, that we would have the resources to be able to put those measures in place.
Well, since I haven't been in municipal court since high school, where do we have municipal court now?
It's right across the street and in the same building as the...
Police station?
Yeah.
I just can't, I just can't get my hands around that, that's just...
If it's any consolation, we do have a bailiff in court, that's one of our regular armed officers, we've been doing that for two years, two and a half now, so there is an armed officer in court while it's in session, so. Give you another example, have you been to Intrust Bank Arena? That is a government-owned facility, and they chose to keep weapons out of there, that's why you get searched with a wand, every person going in there, it has to do with that law. I mean, you could, you could keep guns out of this room, you could keep it out of the city building, you could keep them out of the police station, but you have to have an armed guard and a metal detector and search every person that comes through, and I just don't think it was cost effective, we have these discussions.
And I agree, and I agree with that, I, I realize it's not, but just whoever the genius was that came up with that...
Well, the, the one that I like is that you're gonna carry them in a bar, because alcohol and guns always help you with your judgment.
Yeah, that goes together.
Okay.
But I just, I just wanted to, if it eases your mind at all, we do have an armed officer in there.
And I, and honestly, I assumed you did.
And we, we didn't always, but we've been doing that for about two, two and a half years now, same as we do in this room when commission's in session, we've been doing it for two or three years now, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And I would just add that, I mean, there are some exceptions, I'll review the ordinances given the sensibilities that you've expressed, Commissioner Badway, about the propriety of guns being available within some parts of our city, but I don't know frankly if there are, are many things to be done, and I'm happy to see what might be available and report back if you'd like for me to.
I just never dreamed that you could carry a gun into a courtroom, I just, oh well.
You can't if the governing agency hires guards and metal detectors. Which, of course, is what the Capitol has done for their employees, and the county and the Capitol, or I guess Topeka's done for district court, and so, I mean, it's been done in the state, it's just not, it, you know, it'd be mills for you and...
I'm not, I'm not advocating that, I'm just, I just, it just blows my mind. Enough said. I'm done.
Okay, I have a comment or something I'd like to, to suggest or bring up as we, along those kind of same lines as dumbfounded about what comes from Topeka, I guess, at times, and some of the changes that have, that are going to affect us from the last session, and looking, trying to understand those as well as look forward to the session that's coming up in January, I'd like the commission's thoughts on maybe El Dorado hosting a legislative update and maybe inviting our local, maybe for the county, and include, include the county and include our, your other communities, Augusta, Andover, and such, and invite our state representative and senator, and maybe try, and my thought is that if we could target this for November, get a chance to talk about what was done, and also talk a little bit about what might be coming up in January before they head off, just commission's thoughts on that.
I think that's a great idea.
Definitely.
When do we, when's the mayor's dinner?
It's always in February or March, and it's kinda when you can do it.
Okay.
And it's, and when we do that, we have historically invited El Dorado's state office holders, but we haven't invited all the others in Butler County. We may have included Christie last year just because she'd been the mayor, was the mayor, and, and so had been coming to those meetings, but it's always just been like Will or, or John.
We've had county commissioners.
Yeah, no, no, all county commissioners, we invite them, but our state reps, it's just been the two that represent El Dorado.
If we could maybe pool that together and have, in, also in kind of the, the, the same vein as the regionalism that we enjoyed, that we're trying to get going, that might be a chance to do it for Butler County wide or something.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so with, with the commission's permission, I'll make, I'll reach out to some of the other mayors of Augusta and Andover and such, and poll the interest and kind of report back, okay? Thank you. That's all I've got. Next on our agenda is city manager's report.
Commission, the only thing I really wanted to visit with you about is I did meet with John Prather last week, or two weeks ago now, and visited about the Truck Route Task Force, kind of a safety task force. We reviewed that list, it staffed, there were, seems like there were several additions, but the one that really jumped out to us was, we listed four ninety but not three seventy-five, and, and there actually is a lot of industrial truck traffic in that district, and so it seems like that's probably appropriate too, that they can come to the table, and then I guess I'd ask, do, do you want us to do that? You've, you've seen the list, you want to move that forward and have that discussion?
I'm on the task force, so...
I mean, yeah, I think.
Yes, I think we'd like to see it moved forward.
Okay. That's all I had.
I do got one other thing for Scott, it's, was brought up by the truck drivers that he didn't put a turn signal on the stoplight at Haverhill and Sixth, so when the trucks are traveling, they get hung up there because there's, there's no turn, turn light.
Well, we, we did that to let the intersection flow a little freer, i- if you do do a left turn arrow, then you're holding the, the, you would be holding the eastbound traffic up for cycle, and really with the limited amount of, of truck, or vehicles through that intersection at any given time, seemed the most sense to do that, that a way. We also don't have a dedicated left turn lane at that intersection. In your CIP sometime, years in the future, if you so decide, there is a plan to improve that intersection, add left turn lanes, but we probably foresee that happening if the industrial park expanded further.
Okay, thank you.
And the lights, and you weren't on the commission when they did this, but when we put those signals in, those signals are all located in anticipation of widening and improving that intersection to handle that turn lane, and so they don't have to move again when the road gets built bigger.
And this is one thing for the commission, if you would like to ride one of John Prather's semi-trucks that go through town and do the truck route, he will, he'd be glad to put you in a truck and, and you'll see what a truck driver sees as he's traveling through El Dorado on the truck routes, so if you'd like to do that, he's willing to let you all do that, but I just gotta set it up with a date, we could do it with it.
There you go. Thank you. Anything else, Herbie said, do you have anything else on your city manager?
I do not.
Okay. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda, the only thing left is an adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carries five zero. Thank you.